If something were to happen, we will be coming, me and Mr. Goodbick. Do you guys need us? How do we move that around? I've anticipated and I've got some ideas on how we can be able to retain the people at mental health office.
Mr. Attorney position is a permanent position?
My investigator, my victim's advocate, and one of our prosecutors. All three of them. I'm optimistic, so if they're not, I'm also very worried. Love the fact we're good. Thank you. Jan?
Sorry, I forgot to put this in line of a request when I met with Tom a few months back because I was told that there was going to be a budget crunch and that nobody should ask for too much stuff, but I would like to ask for a 20-hour week in court.
20 hours what?
20 hours week in court.
Part-time.
Part-time. Our workload has gotten...
Do you have a pay break? Are you considering that 20-hour work?
Did not, did not. Like the rest of them.
Get on now?
Yes, like the rest of them. Thank you.
Jan?
I'm happy with what I've got. The only thing that I'm asking is a $30 salary allowance. My job is unfortunately not up to my job. That's why I signed up for it. And my partner is out of town, so...
She gets lots of emails from all the people that take her down there all weekend and nothing. Definitely bored with this time.
I'll stop. Thank you. Ms. Deborah?
After talking to Tom this afternoon, it seems like everything is surgery on our budget.
Yes, we're having somebody around to deliver a larger traffic lap. She does a lot of traffic. I can't remember all of them. Tom?
So I'm providing to y'all is a little presentation that I put together along with job descriptions for every employee in my office. So I have three requests regarding what I put in the tax office. Number one, salary increases. Number two, my deposits and security. And number three is myself about. I'd like to start with number one, salary increases. My focus is the tax office employees. There are approximately 25 employees out of almost 200 that make under $30,000 a year, and seven of them are in my office. The tax office employees collect the majority of the money that funds this budget. Our office collects over $63 million for all tax entities on a yearly basis and manages over 40,000 tax accounts. In 2017, the tax office collected over $8 million and processed approximately 60,000 M.B. transactions. We are now collecting for all entities in Wilson County and are processing Texas Carson Law Line transactions. Section 31.48 of the Texas Carson Law Line Code states that the tax assessor shall retain 10% of the fee collected. The amount retained by the tax assessor shall be deposited to the credit of the officer's salary fund of the county to be used for the sole purpose of paying the salaries of the persons issuing vessel and outdoor voter certificates of title. This is not currently being done. In January 2018, the tax office employees began cross-training to better serve the citizens of Wilson County. Each employee in my office has a detailed job description, which I provided to contribute. I have three levels of job descriptions. I have two chief deputy tax assessor collectors, one of which is a tax specialist and the other is a D.M.B. specialist; two deputy tax assessor collector lead customer service specialists, one of which is a tax specialist and the other is a D.M.B. specialist; and five deputy tax assessor collector customer service specialists. I encourage each of you to review the detailed job descriptions. I feel that salaries should be based off job performance, not the amount of years they've been employed with the county, the longevity paid compensation years of your performance. My employees have huge responsibilities and are very valuable to the operation of the office and should be paid accordingly. If you look on page three of the handout provided, there are salary comparisons from other counties, some of which have similar populations and some smaller, along with the salaries of the Wilson County appraisal district employees, none of which pay a salary of under $32,000. I am requesting that the chief deputy salaries be the same, the lead customer service specialist be raised to $30,000, and the customer service specialist be raised to $28,500. Here are some facts regarding salaries. Road and bridge new hires begin at $30,000. Some road and bridge departments provide a cellphone allowance to all their employees. Building and yard new hires begin at $30,000. We have three making this salary and above and don't have any responsibility compared to the employees in my office that deal with millions of dollars in IRA taxpayers. The collection facility employees make in $28,000. A few years ago, there were large increases to the sheriff's department salaries, including the clerical positions. However, clerical positions in all other departments were not adjusted. For years, the commissary's court has regulated the starting pay of the clerical salaries, and these salaries would not be this low had this not been done. Budgets were reduced when a department lost an employee because commissary's court regulated the salaries against the elected official or department head to approval. My employees are dedicated, respectful, trustworthy, and honest. I value them and feel you should as well. The tax office has high traffic on a daily basis, and these employees greet everyone with kindness, respect, and a smile. With the amount of responsibility and added stress from dealing with large amounts of money, these employees should be some of the higher-paid individuals in the county, but instead are the lowest. It's just as hard to operate a computer and learn multiple software programs as it is to operate a piece of heavy equipment. It doesn't make sense that we have employees that are taking care of grass, clean toilets, take out trash from offices, or manage trash at the collection facility that make more than employees that are required to have a high level of specialized training. It's time to increase the salaries of the employees that keep this county operating. My number two request, which y'all have already discussed a little bit about, is the courthouse security. My only request for that is that if it's passed, that courthouse security would be able to pick up my deposits on a daily basis and take them to the bank for us. The bailiffs are busy and sometimes don't get to come to our office. I've had to call the sheriff multiple times to come pick up my deposits.
What time do you pay your deposit?
My deposits are ready by most of the time 8:30, sometimes 9:00. In the fall, when the collections are going to go high, it takes us longer to get our deposits ready. We should be able to have them ready by 10 o'clock, but you know, that's counting a lot of money and trying to get everything balanced to get the deposits ready. My number three request is my cellphone allowance. Currently, I am getting $50 a month, and I am requesting that that be increased to $100. I use my cellphone for everything pertaining to my office, phone calls, emails. A lot of times, I'm having to use it for my hotspot in order to get on my computer and do stuff with that. I appreciate you taking the time to hear my request and hope that you will consider it.
Third, sir. Do you have anything, sir? Not really, other than thank you. Yes, as you all get the monthly report that the caseload program has grown just a little bit, and you've seen the recent Wilson County news, great, thank you very much. They did a wonderful article on how this office has been taking better care of our veterans in the county with Connolly and Grace Bible Church doing the pain for the breakfast that we do. 2017, we averaged probably between 15 and 60, and already that has grown for this year so far, and it looks like we're going to have quite a proud 2018. The only issue that I have is please do not refer to my office as the Veterans Administration. Go ahead, Edward. We don't want to talk about it. The VA has, they're doing a job that is kind of a dinosaur trying to accomplish something, but veterans and their families are so frustrated with the VA, honestly, they're not going to come out the world calendar. So I am not the VA. I'm with the Texas Veterans Commission, and we are the premier, probably the nation, taking care of our state veterans. So anyway, if we can make sure that we refer to my office, anything else other than the VA, we really hope. Thank you.
Put a third compensation to...
I can't hear you, Steve.
Put a third more compensation for dragging all the people over to the office.
Well, you know, I'm glad you brought that up because she is so impressed with your Wilson County Veterans Office that she has my name all over the walls in her office. And I think that's commendable. Just shows the teamwork. Jan also has in her, in her seventh number of things, but she hasn't yet put my initials in her office, but Jan has put in a human resources office, and I really appreciate that recognition.
He sends them to me and I send them back.
Okay. I would like to request a part-time position to be used in the motor registration office. We have our workload pass recently, and now that I'm actually contracting with the assistant school, I'm having to, I myself am working with the map and having to make sure that the districts are correct. I just received the map last November, but because I have one full-time, she can't do all of the work that has come in from the Secretary of State, those applications, and so therefore I'm requesting a part-time to help complete all that work that she has to do because I can't do it myself. And then we are getting our file ballot updated, so that's another thing that we have to do because we have to clean and purge all the records because our file ballot, we actually scan all of our information and we actually have them on our, on our, on our desk. So obviously, we do have a lot of records on that we don't work because we don't have elections, we get busy every day, so that's what we're addressing.
Okay. This will be another person. We've got both of ours full-time, both of us working part-time, and be another person.
But she'll be a permanent, and I keep her in the motor registration is what I want. So another person will be working, hold you.
How many hours?
Right now, I have one for $29. That's what I have.
What would the pay rate be?
$10, ten eighty percent for selling cell phones. So basically, I'm looking for a permanent and not a part-time.
While we're talking about elections, you had mentioned something about we might need $10,000 for a location or building or... Well, we're trying to get around that now, hopefully. We're looking at the remat, we're going to ask a lot of that box into another box. We have authorization, the attorney memo.
We already have that, we already have the remat. I mean, we already, we need to, if we did that, if we did those two things, we could use that.
That's a very, that was just for the Senate, after the session, I, it's not part of what we presented. No, what's that? The $10,000. No, no, hopefully, we're going to have to do that to get a building or a quarter car trailer or something. Now, I think either precinct four or precinct one will buy something for me. What? I can't hear you. What's that? I don't think we're going to have to do the, the buy a, some kind of trailer or some kind of moving building.
Well, that's because we don't have no location to put it on.
We don't have a good place to put it, not anywhere. Hello, do you have anything, sir? No, I have nothing besides what I discussed with Tom. Thank you. Thank you. Jan? What's that, Tom said? Mr. Kelly?
Your account, I was asking before, it was a reason why I thought it was something that I wanted to go to 9600, and also lead a program to replace the coffee, rather than a sheriff's handiwork. Very simple. We're working gospel office for 9600, we have none of the other. All of us are tools to do the job without labor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Fowler?
Colonel Fowler, Kirk Fowler, precinct three. You gentlemen have a copy of my proposed, what I called the proposed budget, I should have more properly referred to as requesting budget. I'm just going to read this, read it, and just sort of re-introduce. The current budget, and this current budget, 9600, that's the line item, expense line item budget, part of the budget, $9,600 per year is inadequate for a full-time working law enforcement agency. I have operated under this inadequate budget for nearly two years and request it be increased to allow for the growth, enhancement, and professionalism this agency is currently experiencing and is beginning to see the fruits derived from the working agency. I have managed by closely monitoring my constantly changing fuel cost. Fuel and vehicle maintenance are this agency's biggest expense, running 54% to date of the budget year. To stretch this small budget, I have to seek out the least expensive place in Wilson County to purchase fuel and balance that with the distance traveled to get it. Only when it is done that the agency, my agency, has enough funds to make it through the fiscal year with fuel can I spend the remainder of the budget on other necessary items. I am not aware of any other law enforcement personnel in Wilson County who experienced this, as they simply pull up to a maintenance yard and fill up their will. No need to pay, no need to determine where they get their fuel, no need to file an expense report, no need to wait to be reimbursed, no need to create a log of their fuel consumption, and no need to worry about a budget for fuel. Prior to running for the office of constable in Wilson County, I met with county judge Jackson in his office, Sheriff Tackett in his office, former Justice of the Peace precinct three, Jim Burdette in his office, then candidate for Commissioner, precinct three, Commissioner Mike, and Commissioner Five. Those two gentlemen separately at separate events that we attended. In each of those meetings, I presented, if I ran for constable, I would be a full-time working constable. This man, I would serve civil process, provide courtroom security as required, provide traffic control, run traffic, run warrants, backup sheriffs, deputies, enforce state laws and local ordinances, provide control service, including building security checks, welfare checks, vacation request checks, assist EMS and fire, assist other agencies, et cetera. Each of these gentlemen agreed this was the right way to be a constable, and once said based on past performance, that he was excited to see they would treat the office in this position that way. There has never been any secret to my dedication to this position. I give it well more than 40 hours per week on average. Then you have my budget, my requested budget, $12,600 to $3,000 from the 9600 currently, and I don't know how many years have passed since it's been my 9600. Broken out by the different categories here, fuel, vehicle maintenance, equipment, uniforms, office, and subscriptions and dues. Then I have some notes listed regarding the constable salary and a couple of other subjects. Regarding the constable salary, these statistics that I presented here are based on the Texas Association of Counties 2018 salary review. They do this every year. Constable salary, I'm requesting an 8% constable salary increase. Wilson County raises constables where they rank 32nd in the lower 25% of salary out of the 39 counties that fall into the $25,000 to $49,999 population. And according to Texas Association of Counties, Wilson County is at 49,000, approximately 250, I forget what that exact number was, but it's right there, ready to bump up into the next category. So currently, constables are paid in the lower 25% of the 39 counties that fall into that category. Wilson County has the lowest average constable salary in the state. The lowest average, not the lowest, but if you take all the counties and average their salaries, add them up, divide them by 254, the average you get is higher than what Wilson County pays for constable. The average constable salary for the 39 county population category that Wilson County is in is $36,053.28 or $11,000 more than Wilson County constables make. The average constable salary for the 142 counties, smaller, less than $5,000 through less than $25,000, smaller counties than Wilson County is $35,350 or $10,296 more than Wilson County constables. So 74% of the 142 counties, smaller than Wilson County, have higher constable salaries than Wilson County. One-third of the counties in the same population category as Wilson County pay an average of $9,422 per constable for travel and auto events. We had $9,600 for our entire expensive family. All other elected officials, Wilson County officials, within the same 39 counties, same 39 counties, average in the top 32% of their respective positions. Some are paid higher than counties with populations greater than 100,000. Prior to deciding to run for constable, I was told by three elected officials, three currently elected officials, and one former elected official that if a constable performed his job, the pay would be increased. I believe this agency is exceeding job expectations and certainly any expectations associated with the performance established by this office in the last 12 to 20 years. Next item is the constable vehicle. Talking about constable vehicles, to eliminate major budget expenses of vehicle maintenance, which reduce constable's budget rapidly, a program should be established, subsidize the county provides new vehicles on a scheduled basis to constables, beginning with the 2019 fiscal year. These could be provided one per year on an as-needed basis until all constables have received one. If a constable rejects saying, move on to the next in-line. Vehicles should be replaced on a similar basis as sheriff's department vehicle, deputy vehicles, using mileage and/or age. History has shown three vehicles supplied to constables since January 2017 have either been budget costly or exchanged for a different vehicle due to maintenance. Deputy constables, another subject. Consideration for the approval of deputy constable positions needs to begin now. As this agency continues to be full-time and develops and grows in jurisdiction responsibilities and agency assisted functions, the duties and responsibilities will outweigh a single person's agency. Agency consideration, it is important to note that the county has not had serious full-time working constables for some time, if ever. Therefore, the budget process for this office is a work in progress. The lack of recognition for the needs of and changes required for this working office should not be ignored. So my request, 8% increase in constable salary, and for my budget, $3,000 increase over the single line on the budget that I have now. Do you question that?
Thank you. Mr. Dave? Dave, what is that? Judge Kelly? Oh, I'm sorry, Judge Kelly. I'm sorry, over there.
I apologize. I don't know what the other JPs asked for, but I would like to see our cellphone allowance raised from $75 to $100 per month, as we are on call 24/7, and I think that would be equitable. And I also use my cellphone for email and when I have to call the Bay Area Alexander's office in the middle of the night or all of these things. I think we use our cellphones as much or more as any other elected official, so I would like to see our increase to $100. Also, I spoke with Mr. Dootnick about custodial staff in my office. I've never had any custodial staff. My clerk and I clean the toilets, wash the windows, clean the floors, and the county finally came, Mr. Gomis finally had someone come and wax our floors for the first time in six years after many, many asks, and it's still not right, so I'm still working on that. So I requested at least $100 a month for someone to come and do custodial, but I reworked my numbers, and it looks like if I could have a part-time employee work between 15 and 20 hours per week, I would staff that person from 11 until 2 every day, and part of that responsibility would be custodial duties. I would have to find someone who would be willing to do that, and I started, you know, looking at putting together a proposal that I could find someone to do that, who would do both things for me. So I just want to reiterate the importance of that, how important it is to have a clean office, and to, my clerk is already overworked. I'm not going to ask her to stay later, come in early to do that. What I've done now is we are open by appointment only on Thursdays, so 8 to 5 on Thursdays. The office is generally closed, and she's busy catching up on paperwork and still answering the phone, but we just try to keep the door closed to put traffic, so we can catch up with things that need to be done. But having done that for a year, we're still not able to stay on top of everything. So having a part-time clerk for just a few hours a week would really, really be helpful.
Sorry, question. How many hours I would work a week at what pay rate?
Not more than 20 hours a week, and I would try to keep it between 12 to 15 hours a week. I think would be sufficient, but I would like to be budgeted for 20 hours a week, and I would never go over 20 hours a week.
At what pay rate?
At $10 an hour plus.
$1 an hour, okay. You said 11 to 2?
Yes.
Would they, there would not be much break in there?
No.
Would we just be 3 hours?
Exactly.
15 hours?
And I'm looking for someone who maybe has children in school, someone who's got really good skills, but they don't want to work full-time, they've got time to get their kids to school, they've got time to pick up their kids, and if they're going to be sick, I've got time to find somebody, you know, or whatever it is, or if they have to be gone, that's not a big deal. So it's not going to be, hopefully, anything too big or heavy.
Okay. How do they deal with that? What's that? How do they deal with the stolen over?
They go on Fridays.
They go themselves?
They go on Fridays.
During the week, they've always done it themselves?
They go every week on Fridays, don't they?
They have, they hire someone for Fridays?
They, the folks here?
Oh.
Yeah, they're okay. They're starting to take in here as a JP wants. GPS, JP four, I think.
They made a schedule where they've been all the levels.
But they let me know. Actually, I've paid someone from time to time.
Yeah, they got, they got it. Just to let you know, it's a lot of work, or, or just those three guys today?
Can you go over two or one?
One, one hour.
Is it going with person B or can it come to you?
I would like to say a little question. I was, I need to precinct one request that my court clerk can make exact one for me raise up to 30 also. I appreciate this why this is just going to be a process to, it's definitely a lot of difference because we have to do our head out of this. But I would also, I feel like it, and I really appreciate, and that's I know that we're here to last two of these warrants, the county insurance, and I, I thought that is a wonderful event for all of us and our, and our people, and I appreciate that being more, and that's what that helps the salary that they do, that they can have that. And I understand that I'm still in the office, so I understand the importance of that. And I understand that I'm still in the office, so I understand the importance of that, that, that's something that I'm, that's what we're blessed.
Thank you.